What they turned off? Everything is on. That helps.
Yeah, it's not coming from the computer.
Yeah.
Mr. Ish has his hand raised.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ish.
Yes, Darryl Conrad Ish, 828 Aspen Street, Cadillac, Michigan. I would first like to thank City Council for listening to public comment at the last meeting and opening discussion on time allotment for public comment during public hearings. In public hearings where there is great ownership interest or an interested party, I believe those people should be given the ability to present their facts, opinions, and have a seat at the table, so to speak. Those people are, after all, more greatly affected than most. I've been told this discussion will be moved to a position before the public hearing scheduled tonight. I hope that is the case. In the last meeting, I spoke about the need for citizen involvement in our local government. A previous Cadillac mayor and council had identified that was an issue with this subject and created the solution of a second public comment section in the regular meetings. I believe that did help, and I applaud the mayor and council for continuing with that. I believe from my contacts in the community that there is now an attitude that no matter what is said in public comment, it is rarely followed up on, listened to, or considered. There have been many meetings I have attended or watched where citizens have spoken, questioning things the city, done by the city or council. Some are not the best orders, some speak off the cuff, and some have no notes to... That does not make them any less of a voice, any less of a citizen, or any less important. In 2020, I became greatly involved in Stand Up Michigan. Let me tell you, from running Facebook and multi-platform administration for over 386,000 Michiganders who all want a voice is not easy. It turned into 100-plus-hour weeks for me, all volunteer. I learned many things from this experience. I'd love to share them with you, but I would run past my three minutes. The largest takeaway for me was that many people stand in the shadows, many do not vote, many who do vote trust who they vote for and move on with their lives. Unfortunately, that does not help society as a whole. Our government leaders in all levels need public engagement, public opinion, and a true pulse on the people they represent in order to govern effectively. This principle is broken down. I invite the mayor, the city manager, council, and the citizens to involve themselves in re-engagement. It will only benefit the city's outlook and stability. The opinions and comments I have received involve thanking me for standing up, and the citizens do not share the vision and path it seems council is pursuing. Many citizens are angry about expansion of our small city and the amount of tax dollars assessed, borrowed, and spent to pursue growth that will eventually push them out of the city. Now more than ever, we need to support hometown, homegrown businesses that invest back into our community. Many are suffering, some are getting creative. We should be finding ways to help them before helping outside investors and developers with city resources and tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised. If you're participating by phone, you can certainly hit star six to unmute yourself or star nine to raise your hand. We have one caller who's raised their hand, phone number ending in 642.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your name. You're still on mute?
You can unmute by pressing star six.
There you go.
I'd like to address the council and thank you, Mayor, for your time. And I will yield my time back to Mr. Ish if he needs my time. But under public comments, I want to make a few comments real quick. My name is Randy Lindell, Cadillac, Michigan. I am against the development and the city council to agree to terminate the municipal service agreement with Mr. Seifert, for he can build low-income housing. We do not need low-income housing in Cadillac. All that will bring is more drugs and crime, and we do not need that. And there's important underground and utilities underneath those properties that Mr. Seifert and his gang want to build. And now, the developer hoped to have the castle finished by 2019. Now we're into 2021. So he should not be allowed to build this low-income housing. We have plenty of housing. And also, the Cadillac lost, the other addition has not been built, and the city has put a million dollars into that. So somebody is fibbing to somebody, and that is not appropriate. So Mr. Seifert, you can take your Cadillac castle and take it anywhere else, but you cannot build it in Cadillac. And the city cannot allow the termination clause on the city agenda tonight for Mr. Seifert to build the low-income housing. And if there's any time left, I would yield that to Mr. Ish again if he needs that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else with a hand raised at this time.
All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda this evening. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on December 21, 2020. Would someone like to make that motion?
This is Councilmember Shippers. I will make a motion to approve the, where are we, the consent agenda? Yes, to approve the consent agenda.
Alan Boswell, second time.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, before we step into the public hearing, I wanted to take us back to the last meeting when we talked about considering some additional time for members of the public during these public hearings. And so I've had a few conversations, and I would like to make a proposal just to start the discussion. And I'm hoping that the council would support it. But what I would like to make a proposal for is that rather than the three minutes during the public comment, that we double that time and we allow the public to speak for six minutes during the public comment. And they're also more than welcome, just like Mr. Ish has done, to provide documentation to the council before the meeting, too, that, to make sure that everything that they want to express to us has been done before the meeting. And then they use the six minutes to be very concise on the most important points that they want to make to the council.
Is this, Mayor Falcons, this is Councilmember Shippers. Would this be for all public comment or just regarding hearings?
Just the public hearings. And then, just like Mr. Ish did this evening, sorry to keep using you as an example, Mr. Ish, but then they also have the three minutes before and the three minutes after are the last public comments. So they would have a total of 12 minutes in any given meeting to speak before the council.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. It's, especially issues that we have hearings about, folks have a little more to say than in three minutes. And most people are not practiced speakers in public or even comfortable doing that. And to have the gumption to rise up, to state how you're feeling, sometimes it takes a little bit to get comfortable, to warm up. And I've noticed that since we, especially since we've been online, because there are no real visual cues that you're coming close to the end of your time, it seems so abrupt to say your three minutes are up in the middle of a thing, because people can't gauge their time. So I think once we're back in person, it'll be easier to do that. And, but even then, I agree with the idea of six minutes during public hearings. That makes a lot more sense to me.
Thank you. Anyone else have thoughts?
I think that sounds like a great idea. I definitely support that.
I would go ahead and make a motion that we amend our rules so that during public hearings, the time for the public to speak be extended to six minutes from three.
And I'll support that, Councilmember Shippers.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, council. And so that will then take us to our public hearing this evening. Marcus, would you like to step us off for that, please?
Yeah, sorry, I was just looking at unmuting myself. The first public hearing this evening is with respect to an ordinance that amends Section 12-94 of the city code regarding the duration of the Cadillac Castle service charge in lieu of taxes. No different than perhaps what council might be most or more familiar with recently when we needed to do that a couple of times for the Maple Hill apartment project. This is the same thing, where the developer needs more time to make application to MISTHA, and the clock that was set initially is starting to run out. The amendment to the ordinance this evening effectively adds an additional 12 months to that clock accordingly. There's no other change to the ordinance this evening. Uncertain if there are any questions you may have regarding the development itself and specifically related to the ordinance with the developer. He is on the horn as well, and certainly I'm available to try to address any questions you might have, too.
Are we having the public hearing?
Correct, yeah, this would be the time, Mayor, members of the city council, to open the floor for the public to address the council with any, anything that they may have.
And I'm trying to do that on mute. So, that being said, we'll open up the public hearing for input and conversation.
Mayor, Mr. Ish has his hand raised?
Okay, that, right now isn't the time for public comment just yet?
Are you sure?
No, we can. Go ahead, Mr. Ish, I apologize. We'll start your six minutes.
Okay, Darryl Conrad Ish, 828 Aspen Street, Cadillac, Michigan. I appear before you tonight as the owner of lots 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, the entire vacated alley, 76, 77, 78, 1, and 5, within proper notice zone for the Cadillac Castle project. I did not receive personal notice of this public hearing for any of my parcels. This has happened before, and it resulted in a reschedule of the public hearing. I'm aware that there may be an argument that personal notice in this case wasn't necessary. I submit that on the agenda is a possible change to one of the pillars on which this project has been pitched from the beginning. And as such, in my mind, it is a change of the rules during the game, so to speak. I have submitted some of my previous statements to council, zoning and planning, for you to view tonight. On the surface, those points are not why we are here. However, if I was a member of council and the rules of the game were changing, I would want to look at the overall picture. I make decisions based on facts, and in this case, the decisions of zoning, planning, and council were predicated on overall knowledge of the plan for the building. This requested change on low-income and market rate tenants may have been a factor in all decisions had it been known. I've raised many concerns, some of which were used by the developer to change plans. And the city should have known about all of these concerns. The city has invested quite a bit of time and resources to aid this developer in pitching this plan. I have attached all my previous written statements to be entered and a copy of the plot map indicating my ownership. I'm hoping each of you take the time to read and view mine and all other pertinent documents. Many times, I have heard a discussion about something being in a packet for council, but yet no one has reviewed it or done any research or due diligence on the subject. How is one to make a sound decision without completing that? Regarding my specific concerns over sewer infrastructure, I also provided a potential solution. It was noted but not incorporated. I would like to point out that all of the most recent major projects the city has been part of have experienced considerable issues due to, quote, "unknown infrastructure issues and variables that were not planned for." This includes the Cadillac Commons Project, the Better Bodies Project, the Cadillac Lofts Project, and scheduled road improvements last year. I, with ultimate knowledge of the infrastructure, vehicle and pedestrian patterns, and the swamp and drainage issues involved in the development of Cadillac Castle as planned, have been voicing concern at every turn. At every turn, it seems to fall on deaf ears. How much money does the city wish to spend involving in this project its unknown consequences and unintended issues? Through my conversation with the developer, I learned that the current proposed location was not the first choice. I found his actual first choice on South Street very interesting, and I agree. The South Street location is one block down, has better infrastructure for water, sewer, foot and vehicle traffic, and buildings such as proposed is more in line with the surrounding structures. I believe the score the investor is searching for to secure funding will also be improved at that location. That property is now for sale on the open market. It contains a blighted building in the city that has been vacant for years. I urge the city at this point, after bending over backwards for quite some time, that you urge the investor to go back to the drawing board and secure an option and plans on that site. And this site will provide a benefit of improvement to the city, remove blight, provide a better chance of funding approval for the investor, and is better in line with the structure he proposes. When this project reached the approval stage and moved on to the funding stage, I contacted Lansing and was able to voice all my concerns with the project. The committee deciding funding seemed much more interested in my concerns than our own city council. My large ownership and knowledge of the area and infrastructure was appreciated. I, for the life of me, do not understand why my own city seems to take my concerns less seriously. I am hoping my knowledge and one voice, which if you view all my property ownership as if it was individually owned, is quite a statement involving 10 households, will be given the true weight it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ish.
Yes, if you can hear me, my name is Randy, and again, I will yield my time to Mr. Ish if he needs that. But this goes to Mr. Phil Seifert. Your castle that you want to build is not viable for the city of Cadillac. You're using city money, state money, and as a citizen of Cadillac, I've taxed enough already. And I'm trying to be as kind as possible, but Mr. Seifert, if you can't build your castle with your own money, then you need to go. You cannot use that, SOU, I guess. But no low-income housing, as needed, and like Mr. Ish stated, there's other locations and other cities to build it on. And the city has no need to change the city code ordinances that is built for Mr. Seifert, for Phil, and no extra time limit. And the changes of the ordinances that Marcus is trying to pass through, that is not right to the citizens of Cadillac, and we don't need no more, no low-income housing. And again, with the sewer infrastructure, the swamp area and that, and the location, it is just not feasible. And city council should take in consideration and not terminate the municipal service agreement. The termination is also on the city council, what we are discussing tonight, and you cannot change that, just allow Mr. Seifert to have his way. So no to the Cadillac Castles and take it somewhere else. No city taxpayer money unless we get a change of opinion. But no ordinance changes, and I yield my time to Ish if he needs it, and that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Seifert has his hand raised?
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Seifert.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, I have been hanging around on this project for some time. I refuse to give up on it, to be candid with you. I believe in this project, I have from the very beginning. We have decided to submit a fourth application to MISTHA. And I might just note that part of the reason for doing so, I'm trying to get my video to work here, excuse me, can you all see me or not?
We can see you.
Okay. Part of the reason for submitting another application is, you know, they've been considering for some time modifying their qualified allocation plan. They did make some minor changes to it. And they did create, as part of that process, a rural set aside in their qualified allocation plan, which set aside roughly 12 and 1/2% of the tax credit allocation to the state of Michigan for projects located in rural communities just like Cadillac. So it should give us a much better opportunity to compete in the tax credit round, because, you know, we designate the rural category, so therefore, we're not necessarily competing against the Grand Rapids, the Detroit's, except for the bigger urban areas. So anyways, we do have a new market study in process. Matter of fact, it was, actually, I talked to the analysts today, there's still a very strong demand for affordable senior housing in Cadillac. Our application is due February 1st. We expect to hear on the allocations somewhere, I'm expecting in May or June of this year. If we're fortunate enough to get an allocation, we would endeavor to break ground late year this year, and would be scheduled for initial occupancy sometime late in 2023. So anyways, I would appreciate council's consideration for the extension of the pilot. And again, it's merely a request to extend the pilot another 12 months. It provides us the opportunity to secure additional points on our application with the pilot in place. So with that, I'll yield my time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I still have time, I would like to respond to Mr. Seifert.
We don't, you had your opportunity to speak already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else who wants to talk. We have one other caller on the line as well, who can either press star six or star nine to raise their hand. That's phone number ending in 2737. Otherwise, Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and take it back to the council for any discussion or to entertain a motion.
This is Councilmember King. I had an opportunity coming up to this meeting over the past several weeks to have phone conversations with Mr. Ish, I spent time on the phone with. But also, and I feel it's important to raise, several members of our community, not only residents, but business owners, who have commented how beautiful the south end of town has really been coming back, and how anticipated the Cadillac Castle project would be for that south end. The fact that it would really go along with the development we've seen there, help increase property values, put seniors close to our hospital, and grocery stores, and businesses, and be really a hand-in-glove development. So I thought it was important to say, I've had an opportunity to speak with people, Mr. Ish won, and we know his opinions from tonight, and I respect those, but I think it's important to say there's been eight or 10 others that feel this is an extremely positive project for Cadillac.
Thank you.
Could you clarify something, Mr. Seifert or Marcus? The term "low-income housing" has been bandied about tonight. I thought it was 30% income-based and then market value. Can you clarify that?
Thank you, Councilmember. Certainly, Phil Seifert, the developer, can get into some of the weeds on that. The project is approximately 37 or 38 units, in which the 80% of them are going to be low-income based or attainable for seniors that are 55 years of age and older. Approximately 20% of the units are going to be at market rate, and we'll get into that a little bit more when we talk about the municipal services agreement that's separate from this particular item. But that being said, perhaps, Mr. Seifert, if you wouldn't mind giving just a quick 101 on what LIHTC is in terms of this development and the rates of how it equals affordable for people to get in, what they have to, what they have to own.
Certainly, thank you. Am I on? Can you hear me?
You are.
I'm not too good with this Zoom stuff, I apologize. So the LIHTC, sort of, the big-picture view, the state of Michigan gets low-income housing tax credits from the federal government. They then have a competition for these credits. The rules of the game are called the Qualified Allocation Plan. This is our fourth application for an allocation of credits. If we get an allocation of credits, we sell those credits, which creates the equity to buy down the mortgage so that we can, we can have affordable rents. There is no subsidy provided by the federal government or the state government other than low-income housing tax credits, which an investor buys. which an investor buys. And just sort of, I want to give you what our current pro forma is and our mix of units. We have 37 planned units. Seven of those are one bedrooms, 30 of those will be two bedrooms. Right now, on our current pro forma, we're going to have six one bedroom units that will rent at 30% of adjusted median income. And that will be at the current rent, at the current county adjusted median income at 30%, equates to $284 per month. We'll have one, one bedroom at 40. That'll rent at 40% of median, that'll rent at 404. We'll have eight two bedrooms that'll rent for 486. And then we move up to 60% of median. We'll have six two bedrooms that rent at 774. And then we have some at 80% of area median income. And then we also have eight market rate units. The eight market rate units are going to rent for 995 a month. And it's sort of a balance. We have sort of the higher income ones at a little higher rents so that we can, can, can sort of, the market rate, to some degree, subsidizes the lower income units. But the whole idea is an integration of income levels in the project. And MISTHA will tell you that, that's part of their social objective. So that's why we've, they encourage market rate units, up to 20% market rate units in a project, which is exactly what we have. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you.
So I, this is council member Shippers. I have a question for Mr. Seifert. This is senior housing, correct?
That's correct, it's 55 or older.
So I'm curious, you have a project like this in Clare. When you built this in Clare for seniors in Clare, did it bring in more drugs and crime to Clare?
Not that I'm aware of. Matter of fact, most of the business in downtown would, would, I think, applaud the project. It creates pedestrian traffic, it creates shoppers, and brings people downtown. And people come to visit our residents who also shop downtown. So I, I, I think Mr. King used the phrase, sort of, it, it fits like a glove with the south area of town, which is exactly the reason we landed on the site we landed on. With the grocery, the hospital, and everything else.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I would go ahead and make the motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section 12-94 of the city code regarding duration of the Cadillac Castle service charge in lieu of taxes.
Ellen Boss will second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, we do have a second public hearing. The second public hearing is with respect to the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance to approve the exchange of real property within the James E. Potvin Industrial Park. Oh, and if you may, please stick that map on, that would be great.
Okay, I just got a message that screen sharing is disabled. Oh, there it goes right now, so they just gave it to me.
That's because you're suspicious.
I know that.
Mike's got his eye on you.
There you go, you're watching me. Can you see it now?
Yes, perfect. So, Mayor and members of city council in public, if you would take a look at the screen, it, it's a map that indicates the, the whole transmittal of property, the swap. Essentially, Lot 2 is currently under consumers' control. Lot 2 is needed by Spencer Plastics as a part of a, a planned expansion project that they're looking at doing. In fact, later this evening, assuming we, we approve the swap, we'll be asking to set a public hearing with respect to the sale of then Lot 2 to Spencer's. Lot 1, as indicated in the blue highlighted area, is currently under city control. And the area that's in blue is what we are swapping or we're asking to swap to consumers in exchange for Lot 2. This project was recommended and approved through the Cadillac Industrial Fund, as well as the Cadillac Planning Commission, all within compliance of the covenants that are in place for the Potvin Industrial Park. This is the very last step within that process with respect to the disposition of property.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. At this time, we'll open up public comment for this public hearing. At this point, thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I think it's great that Spencer Plastics is expanding and bringing more jobs to the community. So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to approve exchange of real property within the James E. Potvin Industrial Park.
This is council member King, I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on our agenda this evening is a FOIA appeal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. At this point, I need to punt this to Foster Swift. Mike, am I punting it to you or to Ann?
No, Ann's on the line.
Hi, everybody, I'm here.
Hi, Ann.
How are you, guys? I, I, you know, there was some information that we previously sent to the council that I think you've all received about the facts. I think the facts of FOIA made the situation a little bit more complicated than, than it really should have been. So we're trying to unwind that, and I'll explain that in a minute. But the city of Cadillac, you guys received a FOIA request looking for certain information. It was video or audio of the booking area and examination records. The city responded by telling the, the requister that you did not have those records. It's our understanding that the requister sent a very similar request to the county. The county, in its response, seemed to indicate that the city had the records. At least, that's the way it appears that the requister interpreted it. But the city did not have the record at the time and was not sent the record by the county and did not have it in its possession at any point, except that at some point, the requister himself sent a copy of it to the city. So the city never had part of its official record. It's not a public record of the city. So what our recommendation is, is that the city deny the appeal for the, for the reason that you don't have a relevant part of the city's reported documentation. And that was explained to him, and that's the reason why it was denied. We did suggest that we would, as a courtesy, send a copy of the document he sent us back to him, if, if that's what he wants. But again, I think it's, I want to make it clear that at the, at the time of the request, that the city did not have the document, and the county did not send the city the document, and it was only sent at a later point by the requister. So our recommendation is to deny the appeal and then send the requister that notice of denial. And we drafted a sample response for your consideration. Does anyone have any questions about that?
This, this is council member King. If there are no questions, I would make the motion to follow advice of council and deny the FOIA appeal for the reasons stated.
I'll second that, Ellen Boss.
Mayor, just so you're aware, there's somebody by the name of Terrell that has their hand raised.
I, I, I believe he's the, he may be the requister, Mike.
Okay.
And Mayor, members of council, in the past, it's been several years since we've had an appeal, but council has allowed for the, the appealer or the appellant to address council prior to taking final action.
All right. Okay, we can, we can do that. Marcus, is there a time limit given to the individual?
In, in, in years past, I believe it may have been five minutes. It might be simpler to allow.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go with what we did for public hearings and give them six minutes? So if you would like to state your name, we'll give you up to six minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Terrell Bowdery from 406 Stimson Street. Permission to share my screen?
Mike?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd want to know what it is that you're going to share first.
Just the emails between myself and the FOIA director email for Cadillac and the email for Hope Thompson, the FOIA director from Cadillac Police Department.
Mayor, I don't have, I don't have any objections if you don't.
Okay, you have to stay within the six minutes, though, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so this is the email from Norma Kajorski, the Wexford County Administrator. She does have the medical release, which is here, which I won't put on screen. But this was sent to me after I had already gotten denial from the city. This whole incident, however, this is my first email to the FOIA director of Cadillac. I received a response from Hope. That's the next FOIA that I would like to address and appeal. I don't know, I'm a little scuffled right now. But as far as this first FOIA request, my initial FOIA request, I can, I think that appeal can just be let go or dismissed. However, with this denial, I think that really needs to be corrected. It was denied on the basis that they couldn't, you guys couldn't confirm who I was. So I went down to the police department and had to verify my identity. They also said that they couldn't do it because body worn cameras recorded in a private place are exempt from disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. But in that same public act, it says under section four, "except for an audio and video recording exempted from disclosure" under section 13 of the Freedom of Information Act, 1976 PA 442, blah, 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 blah. "Any of the following individuals may request a copy of an audio and video recording recorded by a law enforcement officer with a body worn camera in a private place if an individual is a subject of that audio and video recording and an individual whose property has been seized or damaged in relation to a crime which the audio and video recording delayed."
Sorry, Terrell, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't believe that this is the appeal that's up for the night, the meeting tonight. So if you want to save that for when that appeal is on the agenda, which I think is the next meeting, then you'll have an opportunity to address it then.
The thing is, if I submit a FOIA, which I did, I'm allowed to amend that FOIA.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I, I just want to keep it confined to the appeal that is pending before the city council currently. And if I'm not mistaken, you indicated that you wanted to dismiss that appeal.
I heard that earlier as well. So if we can just stay with the appeal that was brought before us tonight, I would like to do that.
Mr. Bowdery, if I could, I could clarify for you. My, my understanding is you've only submitted two appeals. One of them, and the only one that's on the agenda for tonight, is the one where you have reported that we should have had some, like nurses or medical file. That's the only one that's on the agenda.
Okay. And that doesn't include the amendment to that FOIA?
What amendment to that FOIA?
This.
That's the.
That is the FOIA.
Yes.
This would be the amendment.
That's a separate FOIA request.
This was the very first one that I sent.
You sent, my understanding is you sent.
This would be the. All right.
You sent several FOIA requests that had different, but the one that you're saying in this amendment has, has totally different subject matter. Because the one that you're, the one that you are appealing simply asked for video and audio of the booking area during the nurse's examination of Terrell Bowdery and the file, and the report filed afterwards on January 24th. That's the one.
It's the same incident number, though.
But it's not the same request. Because the other request that you're talking about is for body camera. It's a totally separate request.
Any and all records, including but not limited to body camera video and written documents. This is the very first one that I sent.
But, but that's, you've, you appealed the one that requested the audio and video, and that's the one you appealed. I have your, I have the email where you, that's where you appealed it. And there's a second one that we're going to deal with next week, but we need to look at it a little bit more, and that's why it's on the agenda for next time.
All right. That's understood.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, that was a little clunky. This is the first time that I've had the opportunity to listen to an appeal. So thank you for your guidance.
Mayor, members of the council, I think it'd be helpful for clarification purposes with respect to what council's next step might be, whether or not there's action the council needs to take, or whether or not the appellant actually withdrew the appeal and therefore nullifies us to do anything. Mike or Ann?
Well, I, I, I don't know. Again, if you let Mr. Bowdery back on, are you withdrawing the appeal that you, that you made? And the appeal was for the video and audio of the booking area during the jail nurse's examination of Terrell Bowdery, and the report filed afterwards on January 24th? That's the specific appeal we're addressing tonight. Do you still want the city council to hear and decide the appeal? Or are you withdrawing that appeal?
In regards to that specific part of that FOIA, I would like to withdraw.
Okay. It's just, that's the only part of the, this is a different FOIA than you've appealed a second FOIA, and that will be heard later. So I just want to be clear that you're withdrawing this appeal.
Yeah.
This is Councilmember King. Based on that, I'll withdraw my motion to allow the mayor to let the appellant withdraw that appeal, and we can move on to the next item.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is communication?
Yes, it's being requested to approve the signed request from the Friends of the Library as presented, and this is for the used book sales.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I would like to make a motion to approve the signed request from the Friends of the Library as presented.
This is Councilmember King. I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next request is to approve the request from Clam Lake Beer Company, Herman's European Cafe, and the Raven Social to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in 2021, subject to the conditions noted.
This is Councilmember King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the request from Clam Lake Beer Company, Herman's European Cafe, and the Raven Social to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in 2021, subject to the conditions noted.
Councilmember Shippers, oh, go ahead.
I'll second that, Ellen Boss.
And I would just like to say, this is Councilmember Shippers, that I'm looking so forward to being able to go back out to those restaurants.
Yay.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. If I may just interrupt, this is Marcus. Sandy, for the next item with Clam Lake Beer Company, the motion also needs to include utilization of the parking lot space. How many parking lot spaces are we going to lose?
Uh, one.
Just one?
Just one? Now, this is something, I'm sorry, one quick question. This is something, of course, if we get from another restaurant, we would be doing the same for them, if necessary? I mean... Yes, in fact, I had conversation yesterday with the new ownership for Herman's that might look at trying to do something similar down the road. Yep, whatever we can do to help them.
This is Councilmember King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the request from Clam Lake Beer Company to place pop-up dining tents in the splash pad area from January 19, 2021 through March 31, 2021, along with the request regarding the parking area.
Shippers supports.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And so this evening, we do have some appointments.
Moving on to appointments, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Brian Allenboss to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term to expire on January 19, 2024.
Councilmember Shippers, I would like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Council Brian Allenboss to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term to expire on January 19, 2024.
This is King's support.
Councilmember Allenboss?
Of course, yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Thomas Olmstead to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term to expire on January 19, 2024.
Ellen Boss here. I'd request a motion to approve the reappointment of Thomas Olmstead to the Cemetery Board for a three-year term to expire on January 19, 2024.
This is Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of David Bunce to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on January 19, 2024.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead. No.
Okay. This is Councilmember Ingalls. I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of David Bunce to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on January 19, 2024.
I'll second that. Ellen Boss?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next, we need to, you need to appoint a regular alternate member to the board review for a one-year term to expire on January 19, 2022.
And I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion to appoint myself as the regular member and TI as the alternate member to the board of review for a one-year term to expire on January 19, 2022.
I'll second to add, Ellen Boss.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries, and thank you to both of you for being willing to serve in that position. Okay, Marcus, manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item under the manager's report this evening, because we relocated the other first item, is with respect to a request from the Cadillac Housing Commission to approve their compensation adjustment that they approved back in December 21, 2020. Just for a quick reference, this is a procedural item. The coffers that the funding comes from, does not come from the city, coffers, rather, comes from the housing commissions. However, pursuant to how the housing commission itself was established by code, this item is required for council ratification. The resolution is a one-page resolution, and it simply states how the commission approves the information that was presented and agrees to a 10% pay increase for executive director and a 3% wage increase for all other employees except for their recent new hire.
This is Councilmember King. If there's no discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the compensation change request from the Cadillac Housing Commission as presented.
This is Councilmember Ingalls. I'll support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item under the manager's report is with respect to the hardship or poverty exemption policy. The city, in accordance with Public Act 390, is required annually to approve its policy. The public packet includes a copy of that policy with the recommended amendment. The recommended amendment is with respect to the audit of minimum assessing requirements. We have included new language in the policy to set the threshold to an amount of $50,000 as the total amount of assets not to exceed, excluding the primary home. If there's any questions, I could do my best to address them, as can our finance director, and we have, again, this requirement to do every year.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I would make a motion to adopt the updated hardship poverty exemption policy, utilizing the 2021 Health and Human Services Poverty Guidelines, as well as a $50,000 asset guideline, excluding, of course, the primary home.
I'll second that, Ellen Boss.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My last item this evening is COVID-19 update. I'd like to encourage everyone, and certainly members of the public, to visit the District 10 website, www.dhd10.org backslash coronavirus for all things related to the pandemic, especially now there is a hotline phone number as well as a link for folks that are seniors aged 65 years of age or older to call in order to get essentially on the vaccine waiting list. And certainly, there's statistical information on the impact of the pandemic countywide that's also available. Also, wanted to just take a moment as well, just to reiterate with the city council that with all of you, we're certainly eager to get back to, you know, in-person meetings. As everybody knows, regarding the ability to meet in person, currently, the State Health Department orders continue to prohibit that type of activity, and it's also uncertain as to when it's going to be lifted or relaxed, and when it is lifted or rolled back, in a sense, you know, it's anyone's guess, but we're all sort of assuming that there's going to likely be some social distancing requirements that are going to remain. All of that may cause some logistical issues for us meeting at City Hall. Currently, CAPS is not allowing for outside groups to go in and utilize their facilities, and so I am looking at potential other locations within the city border or within the city limits for us to be able to meet, and when the time comes. But I just wanted to remind everybody that the current Open Meetings Act does allow for electronic meetings through the end of March. Again, it's anyone's guess as to whether there's going to be some relaxation of the in-person meeting restriction between now and then or not, and so we're going to continue to monitor the situation. One of the things that we've been holding back, and we thought we'd be able to be able to meet in person by now, and obviously, we haven't been, has to do with the Trailhead Project. We are looking at having Pryny Newhoff provide their presentation, likely at your next meeting electronically. I still have a list of interested parties that have been a part of all the prior conversations, as well as all the information that was previously provided to everybody when we felt we were going to be in the high school auditorium, that we're going to look at getting back out to everybody, you know, buyer before the end of this week. We need to be able to basically pick a path, no pun intended, so that we can bring it back to council after its rebid for consideration early this spring, so that we can, you know, hopefully get the project built. We just don't have the ability to continue to wait for that in-person meeting, unfortunately. But again, we're monitoring the situation, and as soon as something changes, we'll do everything we can to get ourselves back together in the flesh and in person. I believe that was it in terms of my updates.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. That takes us to the introduction of ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. And Owen, if I could trouble you to please put that map back up on the screen regarding the Potvin Park, just for reference purposes?
Soon as they let me.
Okay. Ann, can you allow Owen to share a screen?
There we go. Here it comes. Yep.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
So I think this map really, really helps tell the story. As members of council earlier this evening approved essentially the swap of Lot 2 with a portion of Lot 1, once Lot 2 is formally under the city's control, obviously, there will need to still be some documentation exchanged between us and consumers to do that with respect to the deed. Spencer Plastics is looking at utilizing Lot 2 to help them accommodate their immediate needs of expanding their business that is currently located on Lot 3. The city has received a proposal for $15,540 for Lot 2. That proposal was reviewed by the Cadillac Industrial Fund, and currently, I can advise that they are very much, you know, in support of the deal that's still basically coming together. There's concurrence with the structure that's been proposed to sell that lot for $15,540 to Spencer Plastics. And if you look at the map, you know, there are certainly some unique circumstances that justify, you know, that sales price, along with the limited opportunity really for any other development activity to occur on the parcel. There is, Owen, something else on your screen other than the map? Thank you. The request this evening is to set the public hearing for March 1, 2021. That's part of a regular council agenda. The Planning Commission, as before, will also need to consider this item. It's uncertain to me as of right now whether or not that'll be on their agenda next week, or potentially on their agenda as a part of their February meeting, but regardless, it'll be heard by them prior to coming back to council for consideration, presumably on March 1. And that is my report.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'd like to, if this is the time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve sale of real property within the James E. Potvin Industrial Park to Spencer Plastics and to set a public hearing for March 1, 2021.
This is King. I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. And Owen, thank you for sharing that graphic. Again, I appreciate it. Under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we do have a couple of this evening. The first one is a request to adopt a resolution to terminate the municipal services agreement with respect to Cadillac Castle. As you heard earlier this evening as a part of the public hearing from the developer in regard to the overall framework of the development, there are 38 units that are being proposed for that project, in which 20% of them are going to be classified as market rate. Those that are market rate units and not otherwise classified as li-tech units are required to have the full ad valorem tax rate charged against them, and then therefore collected by the city. Because of that, it essentially nullifies the need for there to be a side municipal services agreement in addition to the collection of those taxes, as well as the payment in lieu of taxes or the pilot that's also on the project. If the municipal services agreement were to stand... were to stand, however, it is my understanding that that would very likely make the project financially unfeasible to build, and therefore, likely would not occur. I'm not certain if there's any further questions that anyone may have of me or of the developer, but that is the very long and short of it.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Seaford or Marcus?
Is the public allowed to comment?
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. If there's no discussion, would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead. And this is Councilmember Ingalls. I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution to terminate the municipal services agreement with Cadillac Castle.
This is King. I'll support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The last item under this area is with respect to the adoption of a resolution to appoint the Wexford County Emergency Management Coordinator as our city emergency management coordinator. This is something we talked about publicly over the last couple of meetings. This will formalize the relationship of us utilizing the county emergency management coordinator as our emergency management coordinator.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to appoint Wexford County Emergency Management Coordinator as emergency management coordinator for the city.
This is King. I'll support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment this evening. And for this public comment, if you would please state your name and limit your time to three minutes or less. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
If it's my turn, this is Randy.
Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city should not have adopted the resolution to terminate the municipal services for the Cadillac Castle where it wanted to be built. If Phil cannot build that money, that castle without his own money, then he doesn't deserve to build that castle in Cadillac. What is the city doing for the citizens of Cadillac besides providing us with police and fire, besides raising our taxes and utilities? My second point is, I have a FOIA from Sarah Christensen. Can you please tell me what needs to be done in response to the attached letter to receive the city Cadillac? I'm told the author is a regular thorn at the city council meetings, at the public hearings, and this is led her to, no surprise, from Sarah Christensen. Who told her this, I would like to know? And I would like the city to ID that person, for I can have a talk with them. They have no right to call me that, and that I'm a thorn in the city's side. All I am is a taxpayer and a citizen of Cadillac, and I love my city, and I'm proactive. And speaking of proactive, I would like to see the city be more proactive on snow removal, for we can have a more walkable walkable community. And also, Clam Lake wants to put out those bubbles out on the city park, and those is the citizens' park. And through January, March, and that's the best ice skating time for the youth to skate on the splash pad. Now they want to take that over. Now, so, and then for Seaford, hey, Seaford, if you can't build, Seaford, if you can't build it, you're on your own, man. I build my houses by my own money and my own sweat equity. You're using other people's money and my taxpayers' money, and I will stop at that. But I want to know, how did Sarah find out that I'm a thorn in the city's side? Who told her this? And I want the city to ID that person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have, Mr. Ish has his hand up as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Ish.
Daryl.
Mr. Ish, you're muted.
Am I still muted?
No, I can hear you now.
Okay. Daryl Conrad Ish, 828 Aspen Street, Cadillac, Michigan. First, I'd like to say, yes, I am disappointed about your decisions with Cadillac Castle tonight, but I would also like to congratulate you for the six-minute allowance for public hearings, for the approval of the downtown sidewalk cafes, for the extra area for Clam Lake Beer Company, and definitely for the resolution of Wexford County Emergency Management Coordinator. Thank you very much for doing the right thing. I appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you.
Don't see any other hands up, and I don't see anybody, if anyone's on the phone. I don't see anyone on the phone that wants to make a comment.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
This is Councilmember, oh, go ahead.
Me first?
Sure.
Okay. Two things that, you know, I, Mr. Lindell brought up. I had the same problem dealing with this when I thought about it initially. With the old-fashioned days of when you wanted to put up a business, you did it on your own. And I couldn't quite understand that either, and was told promptly that it's just not the way it's done anymore, that there's other avenues that are taken, and I kind of had a better understanding of it. So that's number one. Number two, maybe TI, I was going to say something, I don't know. The Cadillac Vikings are making a historic march down to Ford Field Friday. Congratulations to all the young men, all the coaches, the fans are behind you 100%. So proud of you. As an old Cadillac Viking, I just got to say, go Vikes. You can do it. Proud of you. Thank you.
This is Councilmember Shippers. Yes, I was going to congratulate the Vikings. Also, a couple of other things. I would request that there be some kind of clarification at the beginning of meetings or in the agenda itself that explains why we don't address public comment, and the reason that that's our policy, so that it doesn't, so that it doesn't become a back-and-forth exchange, that it's the public's turn to speak and not our turn to become defensive or respond. We have, in the past, directed staff or ourselves contacted people after public hearing if that's warranted. So I just, I would like, because I know people don't understand that, and there are people that come to these meetings for the first time and have something to say and don't know why we're just sitting here. You know, it's, so if we can clarify that, that it's a way to honor our citizens, to give them a chance to speak with our mouths zipped. Another thing that I want to big up, bring up, is, hey, buddy, Diggins Hill is hopping with all the snow. There are so many sleds all the time. It's wonderful. I'm upstairs in my office. I'm right by Diggins Hill, and I can hear laughter out there all throughout the day and into the evening. I've heard from four different people that there are many broken sleds on Diggins, big pieces of sleds, and sleds are starting to create a pile of them. I know that my husband will snowshoe and walk up the hill, and he and others will pick up pieces of broken sleds and try to get them into their pile. And I understand people not wanting to throw them in their cars and take them home. What do you do with them? But I was wondering if, I don't know if that plastic is recyclable, but I was wondering if we could maybe check that out and check out that pile and see if we can clear out that pile. And who knows? This was even suggested by somebody that talked to me about it, to put, you know, a small bin there that says "broken sleds here" and make it easier to remove them. The way sleds are made these days are not the way they were made when I was a kid, where that sled is would still be in my parents' garage if they still had a garage and was still here. Today, they're made of plastic, and they break quite easily, and there is quite a pile there. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but I love people out there using the hill, and I have not heard snowmobiles going up there this year. So that's good. Let's hope that that stays, because we wanted a safe place for sleds and snowshoes and the like. That's all.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate the Cadillac Vikings football team as well. I have had technical difficulties and haven't been able to send my video over, my words of congratulations and support. But because they made history, I want to put together a proclamation for the team this year, and so I will be getting that done in short order and presenting it to the team from all of us. So if there's nothing else this evening, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.